Order them please.
Stand up.
Mr. Cole.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You kindly. Danielle, would you please?
Chair Cochran.
I am here.
Co-chair Craig.
President.
Commissioner Rule.
I believe present.
Commissioner Bartholomew.
Here.
Commissioner Swanson.
Here.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Here.
Commissioner Bush.
Here.
Role is complete. We have a quorum.
Awesome. Much better than last month. Okay, uh, does the agenda require any additions or removals of a title?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Craig, hearing nothing from my companions, I move adoption of the agenda as printed.
Chris Rule second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm carried. Comments made. Comments may be sent to the planning commission secretary Danielle Charchenko at clerk@cityofording.org by 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting and will be read into the record at the meeting. In the case of a question, the chair will refer the matter to the appropriate administrative staff member. Comments that come in after the deadline will be read into the record at the next planning commission meeting. Moving right along the, the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes and are there any corrections or edits?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Craig, hearing nothing, I move approval of the minutes as printed.
Chris Rule second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? So carried. Architecture design review, ADR 2025-04, Ordin Automotive signage. Danielle, would you please read the staff report?
Yes, so this is for Ordin Automotive at 111 Bridge Street South. They are located in the mixed-use town center. Applicant has submitted a sign designed for two wall signs. Design is attached. Sign dimensions are 56.78 inches by 48 inches totaling 18.93 square feet for each sign or 37.86 square feet for both signs. Building frontage is approximately 16.5 feet by 87 feet equaling 1,435.5 square feet. Sign dimensions are within the 10% allowed. The wall signs will be constructed with half-inch aluminum composite and PVC. Sign design is a company logo using white for the background, black borders with red accents. One sign will be mounted to the Bridge Street South building face and the other will be mounted to Van Skoyak Avenue Southwest. Ordin Automotive will also place three incidental signs measuring 2.83 square feet each. Incidental signs are exempt from the ADR policy. And applicant has indicated Valley Sign as the sign builder and installer. Staff recommend approval of ADR 2025-04.
Thanks Danielle. Commissioners, questions please?
Do, do we have any other fake wood grain already?
Um, the Route 66 pizza is a fake wood grain.
Is that, and that's not white though, is it? That's really.
Uh, no.
We've seen others.
There's, there's others in the, in the Safeway complex.
That are metal?
Yeah.
The grain?
Yeah.
Do you know which ones?
May, maybe it's the picture. It just feels so starfully not. But I love the logo. I love that it's incorporated. Great. I'm looking for that. But it just feels not wood grainy with the pictures that were presented here.
You know what's interesting is the building is kind of a really light color. I wonder why they chose a white trim.
Cause the Cardinals are red and white?
Yeah, well, no, but I meant like, you know, where it's the like little hat, a little more than a half semicircle there. And it's in the wood grain. I'm surprised they didn't put some kind of a trim around that edge to make the sign stand out from the background.
Like a black border?
Yeah, yeah, something, just a.
Like wood grain, but like more, more of a wood, wood grain sign as opposed to white wood.
I will say it seems like majority of the ones that we've passed this year and last year have been the Alu panel. And I want to say that's similar to the aluminum composite.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's more coloring where it does not feel wood grain anymore. It's, it's, it looks aluminum as opposed to wood grain. It's not that, and I'm just going by the picture of the.
Yeah, it's too bad I don't have an actual example of that because it might, i- i- in the picture, if you look real carefully, you can see, you know, a striation in there, but yeah, I don't know what it'll look like in real time. I have a question about the three incidental signs. What makes those signs incidental?
Um, they are the, um, how do I phrase this? So it is a label, I guess, or directional. It's saying.
The reason I'm concerned about that, um, Business Solutions came to us several years ago. I don't know if any, was anybody else on here when they did that?
Yeah.
Were you on it, Jen?
Yeah.
And they had a whole bunch of signs like that, individual signs. And they wanted, and we turned them down because the, the code says you get two signs. And so, um, and we were afraid that if we said, yeah, you could do that, then we were going to have a, you know, set of precedents and everybody's going to say, well, we want more than, you know, our two signs. And these signs, I mean, to, I don't know. Incidental to me is like, um, the drive-through at McDonald's telling you this is the drive-through to come here. What they're doing here, this, the building's small and you know, you're gonna, they're gonna tell you, go in the first door, go in the second door. They're gonna pull it in themselves. They're not really, um, although they have enough room for more signage. And I was curious why they didn't, if they were just advertising oil changes, brakes and exhaust, why they just didn't attach these signs to the bottom of their Cardinal sign?
So they're going to be over each bay door.
I see that.
And the original intention, they wanted to have five signs. Um, well, I guess technically altogether, the logo sign was supposed to have a phone number under it.
Right.
Told them you can connect it with like a chain or find some way to connect it, but they just omitted it altogether. And then, um, to be able to keep the incidental, the, the bay labels, they decided to go under the three square footage. One of them, so that they'd be exempt.
You know, the.
Even if they weren't, or total square footage of signs doesn't see 10%.
Right.
The square footage doesn't, but the limit, the limited number of.
The number of signs.
Yeah.
It's what's wrong. I, I just, I'm just worried because we, like I said, we turned them, we turned Business Solutions down because they wanted to do something similar to this. It wasn't, you know, now there's, their, their building wasn't designating a door. This was a door for this and this was a door for that. Um, it was pretty much advertising, this is what we do here, you know, all the different things that they cover there. And that kind of looks like what this is, is telling you, we do oil changes and exhaust. And I, I don't know. It just makes me nervous that it looks more like advertising, not necessarily a direction to which door you need to be in. I don't know. That's my opinion. What, you know, what do you guys think?
I think looking at the vet again in the Safeway complex, they've got different um, signage for the different doors for what it is.
Are you talking about the individual shops?
No, 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 no. The vet has three doors and they're labeled as to what they're for.
Hmm. I know they have the sign, you know, uh, they used to have the one that says signature. You know, it was a big circle sign and it was, you know, above, and I know they had one that said pharmacy. But do they have something on the other door?
You're talking about Safeway. I'm talking about the vet.
The vet has other, oh, wait a minute.
The Vet Clinic has three doors and they're each labeled as to what they're for.
But they labeled on the door? So is there a sign on their door, like a, like a, um, a sticker thing?
It might be, but.
I can't remember.
I can't remember. I just, I just know that they're labeled.
Right.
I, I can see what you're saying on where it could be considered advertising, but I think we're, I think we're safe on this because
Yeah.
To me, it'd be no different than saying entrance.
Right, entrance and exit.
Drive in, yeah, this is drive this way. Okay, so let me, you know, I just want to make sure we, we had our ducks in a row before we say yes or no to something because.
I believe it's pure advertising because I don't think they'll ever stick to that schedule of putting this type of service in here. They'll use the next available bay.
Oh, I'm, I sure. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, the oil change sign is not above the garage door. It's above the easement or everybody else, or above the, uh, the side where you can see it. But if it's a true label, it'd be a 18 probably, but. Uh, I don't think I'm necessarily against it, but I, I am concerned about the fake wood grain not looking wood grain enough for our standards.
Although the oil change brakes and exhaust does have the black border around it, so it stands out a little better.
I'm hoping that the white will show up better than it does in these pictures.
I'm, yeah, it's, it's tough to vote on a hope as we.
Do you think it would appeal more turn of the century-ish if it was squared and not rounded edges?
Hmm, oh.
Uh, not necessarily. I think, I think the wood, you, you've got such a large logo, like with the Cardinal and the wrenches, which is really cool.
Yeah.
But it's definitely a modern looking logo.
Right.
Versus a sandblasted turn of the century logo. So, uh, that mixed with, you know, really light looking wood grain, potentially, I don't, I don't know what that's going to actually look like.
They've got the black border around the three smaller signs. Um, I'm assuming that they haven't had these already made up. Please tell me they didn't make some.
They're, they're not on the building.
Um, why can't, why don't we just say we want a black border around this sign? Cause I think the black border will help set it off from the building and maybe make it more visible. The, the graining in the, um, in the.
Yeah, you won't lose the, the grain as easily in the, um, main logos if the black border around it.
Is there, um, is there any reason why they didn't want to put their, their little si- incidental signs under? You know, like you said, with like little chains or whatever, just put them all together because they certainly have enough, um, square footage to make the signs and put them underneath there. Cause to me, if you're, you know, if you're advertising, it's definitely going to be more eye catching. You're, I thought, I was surprised they didn't have the phone number. Cause I'm thinking, okay dude, where's your phone number? You said you were going to put it out there. Now there's no number, so how are people going to know? Uh, unless they just look you up, I guess, but. Um, but to me, it just seems like it should be one, you know, one complete sign, not stuck all over the building. And that's, see, that's what Business Solution was going to do. They were going to have them all over the building. So we think that's not going to look right. That's, you didn't, um, you didn't see that.
Um, I think their intent was just to have the bay doors labeled. Um, I do know like their logo signage is over a man door and over a window, so it's. I don't believe their intent was to advertise, but I do get what you guys are saying that if one bay is full, they're probably just going to put the next person in there to do whatnot, but. I cannot say.
I can see that those, those little signs stuck above your bay doors. To me, I don't think that's going to, you know, catch people's eyes the way they think it will. I mean, if you're trying to advertise to tell them all this, what you, you know, what you offer here, which is nothing wrong with that, but to me, that's not a really good use of your sign. Cause nobody's going to see that. I don't think they'll stand out very well. I don't know.
Well.
I don't, I just think the placement is wrong. If, if they hung them with the big signs, you know, all together and one, you know, one thing.
Depending on the equipment, however, that they have, because if they've got the the brake turning equipment in the brake bay, they're not going to do brakes in the oil change bay.
I don't know if they have a pit in that thing or not. Have you been in there?
I've been in there. There's no pit.
There's no pit for, like if you were underneath it to do oil change or whatever.
No, but they could have a lift.
Mm-hmm.
I think the signage could also just be like a solable, you know, that's what yesterday's, you know, camp shops would play. So I mean, I think it could be that.
Okay.
Would the black border around the major sign detract from the supposed gear be- behind the Cardinal?
I don't think so.
I think it would.
It's going to draw your attention to the sign. Well, that red Cardinal is going to draw their attention, but it just, to me, it makes the sign stay, stand out from the building because the building's not very dark either. It's a lighter color paint. And it's not white. So to me, that makes.
Uh, they've got a vinyl sign already of with this on it, like a.
A little temporary canvas things.
Canvas, and yeah. And I mean, it's a sharp looking logo. I mean, I like.
Oh yeah, I, I like, yeah, I like the sign. Yeah, I do like that. Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Craig, um, I move the adoption and approval of, um, ADR 2025-04 for Ordin Automotive as submitted.
You don't want to put that mark around the big sign or just leave it the way it is? Is it without?
I would, I would like to recommend that we have them consider it, but I don't think we need to require it.
I don't think we can do that. We can either say yes, they have to do it or no, they don't. I don't think we can make a recommendation at this point. You're making the recommendation. No, I guess, okay, you want to say that?
Yeah, they have the option to add the border or not, but.
Okay.
Chris Rule second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Though carried. I'm sure that's not Robert's rules, but whatever.
She's waiting since her time to blame stuff. Yeah.
Too soon. Okay. Oops, I lost my. Moving right along here, Ordin Municipal Code update titles 12, Title 13, and Title 15, Public Hearing, um. You got your book out?
Oh, that's so great. It fills out Robert's.
But which, which, which version of?
That's you. That was trying to figure out.
The condensed version.
Yeah.
But I do have the full one if you guys are interested.
Um.
No. It's not as fun.
We want to open and close the meeting before the staff has a chance to explain this? I thought we did it the other way around.
Uh, those are the rules. I print every time.
Really? I read them every time, so. Okay. At this point in time, let me see, it is 7:17. I want to open the public hearing and the rules of rules of order. A public hearing is intended to be a one-way communication providing citizens the opportunity to provide testimony on the public hearing topic for the city of, for the city planning commission to use in their decision-making process. Please frame your testimony in the form of a statement of fact or opinion, not in the form of a question. You will have three minutes to make a statement. City Clerk will announce that time is up. At that time, please finish your thoughts in a sentence or two at the most. Do we have anyone online, Danielle?
We do not.
That would be shocking. Kim, would you please explain what we've been doing for the last 12 months?
Yes, of course, Chair. Thank you very much. It's great to see everybody. I hope that you had a good September. We are here, of course, as you've indicated, for the public hearing on what has been a very studious endeavor taken by this planning commission to update the long overdue, um, uh, revisions to Ordin Municipal Code titles 12, 13, and 15. That's our subdivision regulations, development code, and administration of the development code. Uh, we have, um, I think had a very labored discussion, um, about this over the course of the last, uh, I think nine months now or so thereabouts. Um, and, uh, we certainly have gone, uh, well into depth into titles 12 and 15 and then, and then met again to be able to explore what was edited after our meetings. But we haven't exactly done that yet for Title 13. In August, we reviewed Title 13. I took feedback from the planning commission, reviewed that with the city administrator. And then, uh, the, the yield of that is what's in front of us tonight. So I want to focus the conversation tonight in my presentation on Title 13, given that we've already really kind of done our deep dive into 12 and 15, um, and explored what, what has been recommended for adoption following our meetings, um, together on those titles. Um, and so I just want to review, uh, Title 13 in that same vein. Um, of course, all of these titles are included in your packets tonight and I'm happy to be able to go over any of the content that you see um, among these, uh, these proposed edits. Um, before I get into kind of the meat and potatoes of the content, I just want to go over a couple of the, of the administrative um, sort of necessary components of this. This is an administrative function uh, or excuse me, a legislative function to be able to change the code in the Ordin Municipal Code. Um, it means that this is a type five action which is required to be noticed to the state and opened up for SEPA. Um, the city has gone about its required notice of intent to adopt the municipal code to the Department of Commerce and all state agencies, and we received no feedback from the state. We also held our SEPA comment period after noticing a determination of insignificance. There was no public comment that was returned in response to that SEPA notice. And this public hearing has been properly noticed, um, uh, in all, um, venues required by the code. And we received no comments in response to the notice of public hearing. Um, so probably this is an excellent product. Um, if we want to, um, move forward into the actual content, um, that staff is proposing, staff is proposing, uh, the planning commission to make a recommendation at the closure of tonight's public hearing. Um, and that that recommendation be for the city council to adopt the, uh, the ordinances that are presented in the public hearing packet tonight. Um, moving right along to the, um, the more, uh, sort of, uh, meat and potatoes, um, portion of the hearing. I want to first go over what I heard from planning commission in August and what has manifested in staff's recommendation in the hearing tonight. And then also go over a few other edits that have been made since planning commission has seen this title last. Um, really that kind of breaks down into three segments of the hearing that I want to present and then I'll take any questions. And of course, as always, you can interrupt me whenever you need. Uh, first I'll go through, uh, what I heard from planning commission in the August meeting that got folded into these comments. And I'm just going to, um, give some page references here. Uh, one of the comments that I heard from planning commission in, in the August meeting for Title 13 was that um, building coverage didn't need to be something that included roof overhang areas or eaves. That was, um, uh, that was action that was taken or requested by planning commission. We have since updated the definition of building coverage. You can see on page 69 of your packets that the definition for building coverage, uh, now excludes roof overhangs and eaves and supporting members or roof edges. So, um, now, uh, structural coverage will just be, um, calculated based on a percentage, uh, that, that goes all the way to the wall of a structure and doesn't count the eve. Uh, the next edit that I want to point out, um, is also reflective of feedback that we heard from planning commission. Um, it was a recommendation, we talked about where it would be appropriate to put, uh, preschools and kindergartens because right now they're not expressly allowed in our code and, and we certainly have some, um, outspoken desire in the community for those, um, uh, establishments. And so it was a recommendation of Commissioner Craig to be able to allow preschools and kindergartens anywhere that daycares are allowed. And so we've made that change. If you look on page 102, which feeds into the land use matrix, you'll see that preschools and kindergartens have been added to the land use matrix. And their allowances, um, mimic where daycares are allowed in town. Moving right along, it was, uh, another bit of feedback from Chair Cochran at the August, August meeting, um, that, uh, cargo containers in the RU zone are, um, pretty inappropriate. They're not in keeping with the intent and purpose of the zone. Um, that there can be allowances for their temporary use in a move um, or some sort of construction project, but that for, uh, otherwise allowances in the RU zone isn't appropriate. Uh, Chair Cochran asked that we consider removing cargo containers as a listed conditional accessory use that's allowed in the RU zone on page 105 of your packet. Um, I went ahead and deleted that, but in addition to that, I also, um, recommended the deletion of all of subsection A or subsection H that's listed on page 110 of your packet. That governs cargo containers allowed in the RU zone in situations other than what I've described, moving or, or, you know, short-term construction projects. Um, and so because it's been the expressed opinion of this commission that they just shouldn't be allowed other than for those minute instances. I'm just recommending we get rid of H entirely because subsection A still makes those small provisions for those minute circumstances. Moving right along, if you skip forward to page 118, uh, you'll see that, um, staff has recommended that we allow for, uh, accessory structures or secondary structures in the MUTC in the PF zone to be built, um, in excess of 20 feet. This again was, it was a recommendation that was brought to planning commission in August and confirmed when Chair Cochran taught us all about why, uh, height standards used to exist at 20 feet and it's because our firetrucks didn't have ladders. Um, so because we didn't have any ladder trucks back then, the code existed in this way, but now that we have, um, more sophisticated equipment, um, a- and we have a knowledge that we have school projects that are coming in, the high school intends to expand, our public works facility is intending to expand. We want those PF zones and the MUTC zones to be able to enjoy, uh, taller structures to support our schools and public facilities.
Uh, Kim.
Go ahead.
To drag you back to page 74, I also note that, um, gas stations or service stations has been changed to fuel service station, uh, at our request and thank you for that.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and that's been, um, carried over in the land use matrix as well. Um, there are, there are a few other, uh, recommended edits that came out of the August meeting that I spoke with the city administrator about and he disagreed with, uh, pu- putting in our recommendation tonight. And those are all related to um, vehicle-related uses being allowed in the MUTC zone. We talked about car washes. We talked about used car sales lots. We talked about um, a number of uses that are related to a more sort of auto-centered use. Um, and I spoke about that with the city administrator. Um, he's, he, of course, this is your recommendation to make, but the recommendation from staff is not to allow for that for a few reasons. One is that it doesn't seem to be very, uh, in keeping with the purpose statement of the MUTC zone in our code. It's supposed to allow for a more attractive and eclectic, uh, span of uses to include residential uses, which kind of feeds into another point that he made, which is that, you know, the MUTC zone in our code allows for the tallest buildings and the, the, you know, most expansive build-out potential. You can have zero lot lines. You can have 100% lot structural coverages. The MUTC zone, uh, itself is the mixed-use zone intend, intending to provide retailer, commercial, office spaces on the first floor and re- residential spaces on the upper floors. Um, that sort of vision isn't really carried out by a mechanic shop or a car wash or something that isn't conducive to allowing for upper floor development up to 45 feet at 100% of the built-out capacity of the site. So because it kind of precludes that, that intent and that vision of the downtown core, it wasn't something that the city administrator felt would be a fair representation to be recommended by staff. Um, I'm happy to discuss that in more depth, but that's why that is not included in the recommendation and the materials tonight.
Well, what have we just recommended as far as Ordin Auto, Auto?
Well, Ordin Auto is, is an established non-conforming use. It can stay until they abandon their non-conforming use.
So we, we don't allow any mechanic shop or, um, in the, uh, downtown area at all?
Right, right now, we don't have any sort of provision in the code that would allow for, I think that the specific, um, things that we discussed were auto repair shops, used car sales lots, storage yards for vehicles, um, and then car washes as well. So that wasn't something that was.
Because like the towing company, when they were next to, uh, what is now Ordin Automotive, they had a storage lot in back.
Right.
But since they closed and left, that would not be a, a suitable use under the current code.
Do we have some, uh, Azoneian ordering that, that would actually accommodate that?
We do. It's the light manufacturing. The only parcel in the light manufacturing zone is where we have the, uh, PAC substation in town. On Calistoga. So it's not very expansive.
We don't have any other, uh, we don't have any other LM in town?
None other.
Really? Wow. See, that's why we needed the Growth Management Act. We wanted to grow some industry kind of stuff outside of the town, not in silly downtown.
That's an interesting point that you made. Uh, Scott and I have also had intensive conversations with. intensive conversations with the county and with the state over the last month or two to be able to explore just that. The city's been approached by some residents that live in the subdivision outside of the golf course, and that's technically unincorporated Pierce County, and they've approached the city with some interest in being able to pursue a incorporation of that area into the city's, the city's incorporated area. And we've talked ad nauseam with the county and with the state about that, and we've been given statute that says that we can't, and we've been, you know, it's been made quite clear.
No pockets.
Well, no, we can't jump, and we'd have to have we'd have to have High C to sign in, and they.
Well, the thing is, is how it works is that Ording has no UGA, urban growth area. And to first be able to incorporate land, then county area has to be in a UGA. And to be able to make county land UGA area, the city has to have a an exhibited need to be able to expand its boundaries and absorb that UGA area. And by that, they mean that we have been assigned growth targets that we're unable to meet in our existing city, and that we have exercised every ability to be able to meet those targets by upzoning land, allowing for, you know, more dense development in that area. We just simply, even in that regard, simply do not have the land capacity to be able to facilitate the growth that that our city is assigned. Because we don't have that problem, and we met all of our growth targets in our growth in our Conference of Plan update last year, the state feels that we have no legitimate cause to expand the bounds of the city by asking the county to agree to create area in the county as UGA and then allow us to annex it in. Right now, there just isn't statutory space to be able to do that. But we it was something that we thought about because, you know, we thought, well, if we were going to go down this road, what about expanding all the way out to McMillan Industry Area and absorbing some of that industrial area for potential growth there? But it was so far, it's been expressed to us to be quite a bit of a nonstarter.
The city, well, the county actually should be in favor of Ording being able to do that, especially with the number of county deputy sheriffs that are fleeing to higher-paying positions because technically those areas should be receiving law enforcement from the county, not from the city of Ording. And the city of Renton was very successful in taking unincorporated portions of King County that were in like situation to what we're sitting here looking at because 45-minute response times for the county sheriffs to arrive to handle crime in those neighborhoods was deemed unacceptable. And if the city of Ording would not have our officers respond to that area and require Pierce County to provide them the law enforcement that they need, it would be interesting to watch how fast Pierce County would be standing with Ording saying, oh, yeah, let's let Ording have it.
You might be right, Commissioner Craig, but I know Chief Gabry looked very well, and I don't think that he would ever, ever, ever allow for some sort of crime to continue to be committed within response time.
Just for that relationship because we rely on county for a lot of stuff, too. There's many times that we're we have one officer on duty in town, and that officer is out transporting somebody to jail. That's two to three-hour turnaround.
Right.
Another call comes in. Usually, it's a deputy, somebody from county that comes in and responds to the call.
Totally totally understood all of that. However, I was, yeah. County and Renton worked together to make it happen. And it didn't impact negatively the relationship between the county and the city. In fact, it enhanced it.
Yeah.
So that might be something that needs to be discussed because, again, while I know that the chief would not allow for that to occur, but, you know, for for them to be negatively impacted, but it could serve the city well.
It's an interesting academic exercise. I think that the point that you're making is something that I did try to convey to the county because it does otherwise state in statute that urbanized areas are the appropriate, like cities are the appropriate provider for urban services, and we're talking about an area that's already entirely built out in an urban way. Plus, also, we are the utility purveyor for that subdivision. And so, you know, I did kind of try to, you know, push that to say, hey, this is an urbanized area. It is immediately in keeping with the otherwise urbanized footprint of the city. If you didn't know where the city boundary line was, you'd have no idea that that area was outside of the city limits. And so, come on, just give us the UGA. And they said, yeah, no.
You know, this is we've been playing this game for a lot of years because I remember probably 30 years ago, we we started way back then trying to get our urban growth line expanded because we were trying to pick up, you know, either Sasaki's Farm out there by, you know, the Soldier's Home, trying to go out toward Baxter's. We tried to get to McMillan, the the box factory there. We tried everything we could trying to expand the line, and they just shut us down every single time. They never they we couldn't get anywhere with them. And it's, you know, their first their first thing was they were not going, we're not doing that because it's all rural, and we want to keep it rural, and we're not going to let them build. Well, that's not true. They let them build. Look what they're doing to daybreak. 537 houses up there. Yeah, that's not rural anymore, people. And that's not farmland. And so, you know, it's really interesting. You know, they kind of talk out of both sides of their mouth. And it's it's not fair to what, you know, we're trying to get a, you know, some sort of a, you know, a tax base for this city other than just the homeowners, which is a horrible burden for them. And, you know, and we can't, they won't let us do it. They will not let us step outside our line. And it's been going on for at least 30 years, I know.
Right.
And I I concur with what what Commissioner Craig was saying, too, about, you know, we got to find some kind of leverage point with the county, something that we can leverage them on.
Yeah.
Well, I can continue to think it's kind of removed from this effort, but I but but even still, I can continue, you know. Scott and I haven't given up. We've kind of thought that maybe our our approach needs to be different, like maybe this is more of a political will fight than it is a you know, may maybe maybe that's the way that this needs to go, but we'll have a talk when he's back from his vacation.
It may be a greater opportunity after the next election.
That's true.
Yeah, I'm just I'm sorry to hear that Scott's making sense. I do agree that, you know, the car wash downtown in the middle of town is not really a great idea either, but.
Right. I mean, the city recognizes this, you know, the the focus of the state is so, so heavy on housing and nothing else right now. And so, you know, from my perspective, I think about other ways, you know, there's a large undeveloped zone over here off of Harmon in the RMF zone. You know, what if that were something that could allow for more sort of retail or commercial development that the city doesn't have right now? When you need tires, where do you go? When you need jeans, where do you go? When you need you probably drive to Puyallup like everybody else in the valley. And so, you know, to be able to see some sort of, you know, expansive, like a denim boutique. I'm just saying that as an example, not that I would particularly push for, but wouldn't that be nice to have just a nice variety of but a variety of shopping and opportunities like that. But the focus is just so heavily on housing right now. There's such a and they're almost blinders to anything else. And so in that vein, the county also expressed in our call that they actually are getting rid of UGA because they, you know, felt as though it was their burden to force a centralization of urbanized activity and housing growth rather than allowing for fringe development to continue in the UGA rather than allowing for cities to be able to incorporate UGA areas. So instead, the county just retracted UGA completely in certain areas. We're not alone in this. Buckley really wants to be able to incorporate some area in unincorporated Pierce County around them. Maybe they'll get it figured out first, and we'll just copy what they do, or maybe we'll we'll maybe we'll partner up and and take a bigger political stance in Olympia. Scott and I have been known to do that about a couple of things, so, and we know a guy, so. We'll we'll try that. We'll try that way, too, if we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Because I know that it's everybody's favorite topic to discuss the things that the state is making us adopt, I have another thing to introduce into tonight's topic of discussion, which is House Bill 1998. House Bill 1998 is focused on co-living, which our our code already contemplates, but calls it something different. We call it single-room, uh, single occupancy rooms. And so and right now, those are only allowed by conditional use in the PF zone. House Bill 1998 has different provisions. They do require that cities allow for co-living to exist in any parcel that allows for the development of at least six multifamily dwelling units. And they can't be encumbered by some sort of public process that isn't otherwise required elsewhere in the zone. So like right now, we conditionally allow co-living in the PF zone and nowhere else in town, so we can't do that. We can't. We can't allow it to go through a conditional use process because nowhere else in town is it required to do that. And the conditional use process is a public hearing process in front of a hearing examiner, so we can't encumber that allowed use. And so what you'll see in Title 13 to be able to enact House Bill 1998, which we are required to adopt by the end of the year, is we have given a little bit of a more clear definition of the term on page 86 of your packets. You'll see the term "single-room occupancy sleeping unit," aka co-living. And what this what it means is it's effectively a structure that has individual lockable rooms, and they oftentimes have shared cooking facilities. When I was in the military, it was a dorm. And so you can think about it in that regard, but you could also think about it in like a large house. And so it has to be individual lockable rooms that are able for somebody to be able to stay in, and then again, shared cooking facilities. They might have individual restroom facilities. The the Veterans Village sort of gets there, except for that they have the individual units, but it'd be like that, but in a larger joint structure.
Like the old boarding houses?
I was just gonna say, just call them boarding houses.
They're called boarding houses. They used to be a really, really prevalent form of housing, and then they kind of got written out of all codes, and now they're being introduced, bringing back. It's interesting. If you want to, you can go read the House Bill or the RCW. The intent and purpose statement really speaks a lot to that history and like all of the benefits of co-living housing for creating affordable means of living.
University District.
They do that.
A lot of them there.
Yeah, most of the buildings there are.
So what we have done is we have added some, you know, important context to the definition of single-room occupancy sleeping unit in our code on page 86. And then you'll see that in on page 100 in the land use table, we have written that that co-living or single-room occupancy sleeping units are permitted in the RMF, MUTC, METCN, and PF zones. And then I created a new footnote, and that's footnote number 26. And if you go and read footnote 26 at the end of the land use table, it specifies, and I'll read this for the purpose of the record. Single-room occupancy sleeping units are allowed only if the lot subject to their development allows for at least six multifamily residential units. Density of single-room occupancy sleeping units shall be calculated at 0.25 dwelling units per single-room occupancy sleeping unit. That's a requirement of the law. Sleeping room or single-room occupancy sleeping unit shall be considered 0.5 ERU. That's equivalent residential unit per sleeping unit for purposes of calculating the city's current sewer hookup fee as adopted by Resolution Ordinance applicable to the proposed development of single-room occupancy sleeping units. That also is required by law. All other provisions regulating co-living units, which are referred to as single-room occupancy sleeping units in this title, set forth in RCW 3678 535 or as amended. And then I also included that in the PF zone, I included footnote number 27, which specifies that where allowed in the PF zone, sleep, single-room occupancy sleeping units are only allowed on the property that's owned by the Department of Veterans Affairs. So that way, there's no proposal in the future for somebody to build one of these units on the school property or at the public works facility.
Thanks for clarifying. When I read this, I'm thinking, okay, how did I miss all that? I don't remember any of that.
Yeah.
I must have been sleeping through that part.
No. Yeah, something that we had planned.
Hadn't read it before, and I'm thinking.
You're not. You're not crazy.
All right, great. Thank you.
And then the only two things that I wanted to make note of that are that are different than when this commission saw this in August is minor variances in site plan reviews. So right now, our code contemplates variances. They are. There is one process to be able to seek relief from a dimensional or density standard in this city, and that is via a general variance application that's heard by the hearing examiner. Doesn't matter how small it is. What a lot of cities do is they have kind of a tiered approach to variances. So they have a general variance for rather cumbersome or larger requests to deviate from the code. And then they have a minor variance or an administrative variance that the city administrator can choose to issue an approval on for smaller deviations from the code. I've written that into the Ording Municipal Code. And I've I've started with definitions on page 89. You'll see that it now discerns between a major variance and a minor variance. A minor variance is defined as a permissible modification of the bulk dimensional or numeric standards of this title when the request is is to deviate by no more than 10% of the bulk dimensional or numeric standards applicable in this title, subject to approval by the administrator. And so this gives Scott the ability to consider deviations from the code when they're within 10% of the dimensional standard. So as an example, right now, let's just say that the the height allowed for a building is 35 feet, and somebody wants to be able to build it 35 feet and one inch. Right now, they'd have to go to the hearing examiner for the one inch. But if they if we choose to adopt this, then Scott could be able to consider that minor deviation from the code. This also continues forward and manifests in later in title or in chapter six. Let me get to the page, sorry. Forgot to highlight this one. If you look on page 158 of your packets, you'll see that this is in 1363 of the code. And if you look on page 158 of your package, you'll see that I added subsection F, which governs a minor variance. And it spells out what the decision criteria is for that minor variance. So Scott's not able to approve a minor variance unless it meets each of these decision criteria, that the granting of the variance will not compromise the intent of the comprehensive plan or be inconsistent with the goals, policies, or objectives thereof, that it's an immediate remedy to a condition which, if not permitted, would would not result in any significant adverse impacts to adjacent properties or structures. So he has to consider the impact to neighbors. A strict application of the standards would impose an unreasonable hardship upon the applicant or property owner. The need for the variance is not the result of deliberate actions of the applicant or property owner, so you can't do something illegal and then come in and say, well, I'd really like a minor variance, please. That's not you wouldn't meet the decision criteria. And that the the variance does not create health and safety hazards. So if somebody applies for an application, meets all these criteria, then Scott could say, okay, you can build one inch higher. And then the other the other notable change that I wanted to point out, we talked about this in the last August meeting, but I didn't have the the language drafted just then, but I do now. It's for site plan review, which is on page 176 of your packets. Again, just as a reminder, from the August meeting, site plan review is a fairly typical land use permitting process that precludes or precedes all other permitting entitlement that comes later on the application. Right now, the site plan review allows for the planner to be able to conduct a zoning consistency, a land use and environmental consistency of a proposal. Right now, that kind of gets buried into the building permit review process, but that can be a real frustration for a few reasons. One, by the time somebody's come along and applied for a building permit, they have paid an engineer to make structural plans. And so if the planner hasn't yet been able to look at it and say, actually, you're not allowed to have like a modulation that long or something like that, then then the applicant then has to take that back and have all of their sheets redesigned to be able to comply with the zoning code. That can manifest in a thousand different ways, but it's best, I think, for the overall project to be able to allow early input from the planner via site plan review. Via site plan review and then allow, once they're consistent with their zoning, then allow for the zoning to frame the building permit application that they're going to submit. So that way all their engineering crew is developing plans that are already consistent with the zoning baseline. It's typical for land use entitlements to be the first part of a development project and this supports that. That is all I have to be able to present at this public hearing. I'm happy to address any questions from the commission or if anybody has entered onto the call from the public.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
I like all of it.
Well, it really makes sense.
Yep. Especially this last part, uh, the site point review. I think that's a really needed thing. So.
They can clean stream loans.
Yeah, yeah. Get rid of red tape.
That could leave you at a lot of contention.
Very quickly. Current contingent.
Well, hearing no one else that wants to speak. And no questions from the commissioners. I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:51. At this time I will consider a motion.
Adam Chair, Commissioner Craig. I would recommend, I, I would move that we, that the planning commission recommended adoption of ordinances. 2025-1147, 2025-1149 and 2025-1150 as prepared.
Chris rule second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So carried. I didn't save here as much time as doing this originally.
I'd also like to thank Kim for the amount of work that you've done on this. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, amazing work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along then. Old business dumpster violations. We should be past this by now.
I'm aware of any.
I, commissioners, anybody know, any, no? Uh, sign cone violations?
Since the, uh, since Safeway took down their flutter flags.
So.
And then of course, there's all these, yeah, then there's all these, uh. Pop-up signs that are mixed in amongst the, uh, political. Election signs.
Are election signs allowed to have lights?
No.
Lights?
So the one that's just on your way out of town has lights on it next to the road.
Yeah, awesome.
It says Chris Moore.
Yeah.
Has full lights, two on the front.
Wow, I don't know. I don't think I've ever.
I don't think.
Oh.
No, well, and, and the planning commission did get, uh, sucked and made a mistake. On an approval, uh, if you'll notice that the, uh, Safeway fuel station. Did get their, their new signage in with the, you know, electronic. Price of, of gasoline. However, it is not in compliance with the sign code. And we approved it because it's a backlit sign and it's the only backlit sign in town. It is no longer the, the etched wood with the gooseneck signs. If you drive by it tonight, you'll see it is lit from inside. The Safeway logo.
I don't recall changing the, that sign. It was supposed to be just the numbers.
Well, if you go back and read what we were. Led to approve. It does say that it would be lit from within. No, the, the. The freestanding monument where they've got the price of fuel. It used to have the, uh, etched wood. Safeway logo and it was lit with gooseneck lighting. From the outside. And if you drive by it now, it's nice, smooth plastic. And it is lit from within.
No, I don't recall telling them they were, could change the sign. They were only supposed to be changing the, the price of the sign. So that they could digitally do that, not have to lift the little cards.
Go back and look. That which we approved. Yep. Go back and look. Cause I looked at, I, I went back and looked at it again. And I brought it up at the next meeting before they had made the sign.
Yeah.
And, um. We didn't do anything about it and it is now a non-compliant sign.
Could it be considered? A secondary permit sign?
Nope.
That's a, it's considered a main.
It is, it is the main fuel price sign. And we had much discussion because. Recall that they wanted to put it up on their mark, on their, on the canopy. And when we approved it, it was move it down. And if you read the, the verbiage. In what we approved. It. Allowed them to put it as a backlit sign. And.
Did they resubmit for the lower sign, the entire lower sign?
If.
We're gonna have to look at that. Go back and look at your notes and, and look in your, and everybody's notes and anything, any little, you know, journals you wrote on the side about what you were, what was going on at the time. Cause I'd, I'm, you know, they had the main sign that I was under the impression, all we were talking about was changing the numbers. So they didn't have to change, you know, manually change the numbers. They could just digitally change.
Digital.
I think here.
Yeah. Yeah, we need, yeah. Everybody, you know, check your notes and see if you've got anything that, you know, how you see it. And we'll, you know, bring that back to the next meeting for sure. Cause that, yeah, that's not okay. We, I don't, yeah, I can't imagine we, if we, if that's what happened, that was a misunderstanding. That was not what this board was considering. Cause they have a beaut, they had a beautiful, you know, wood sign out there. And they were, we were just talking about the numbers, not replacing the whole sign. Yeah, that needs to be looked into. That's crazy.
Does anybody remember what month that was?
Yeah.
That's why all my files are by the truth.
I'd like to see the, the side of them.
Yeah, my, yeah. My files are all done by addresses. I don't do anything by noon. February. Yeah, that's, yeah, let's, everybody review that and see if you can, you know, if anybody has the same understanding, we'll bring that back to the, um, the November meeting.
Would you like that as a separate topic or just address it during the signing?
No, separate topic.
Separate topic, yeah.
In the meantime, we could get what was the approved sign permit.
Yeah, that should all be in the.
Changing directions again.
Sure.
It is, it is not approved for election science to be read up there.
It's, it's codified.
Sorry, it's codified. That illumination of temporary science is prohibited. I've given the code reference to Danielle and CC, the acting city administrator, or the, excuse me. The city administrator and the assistant city administrator. Who also happens to be acting as the city administrator while he's gone right now. So they can, um, do with that as they please with the code enforcement officer.
Thank you.
Kim Agpulfi.
Oh.
Yeah, she's assistant city administrator. She stands in when Scott's gone.
Yeah, that's a, that's a city clerk slash.
She has some per diem when they move her up to that name title. I do too. Okay, um, planned absences. Everybody gonna be here for November? Yeah, November 3rd.
Yeah, day before election day.
You won't?
I will.
Oh, good, okay.
Also right after the end of daily service time just.
I wish they'd just make up their mind. I don't care which way they go, just go one way. I'm done doing that. Lord. Makes it so hard to get up when I do that. Uh, council meetings. Anything of interest there?
Nothing to officially report?
Right. We've seen what you've seen.
No staff available.
I'm trying, did we pass a, a, like a code update?
No, they moved it to CGA and then we went to CGA. We're bringing it back at study session.
That's right.
So, I don't know.
The agenda out for Wednesday's meeting?
Yes.
Can we get copies?
Absolutely.
Just had a quick question. What's, um, so I saw the, the drilling rig gone and looks like they, looks like the rebar, the shaft rebars have been set in the ground. Do you know, like, kinda, like, just a, just a ballpark estimate where we're at in the bridge?
I don't. I'm pretty removed from that project now.
I know they were glopping, glopping, uh, concrete today.
In the, in the shaft holes?
On the, well, on the, uh, east side.
Oh, okay.
I don't know how you like to take your news, but I know that Ashley DeGraffin Reed, she does a really good job of keeping up with, uh, project updates of that. And like posting like pictures and everything on social media content. Yeah. Ashley DeGraffin Reed.
Yeah, project manager.
We have a page, um, that she updates often on the city website as well.
Yeah, she posts neat pictures of the construction activity and stuff.
On the homepage, there's a project update button and it'll redirect you.
Live entertainment.
That is, he's favorite look. That's the chief. He does the drone footage.
Cool.
And then, uh, Kansas Street, is that, is that, um, ready for, uh? That ready for execution in the next year?
I know we're getting really close. I think we're on track. Um, I think the next couple council meetings will decide if we continue to stay on track or not. I want to say we did get the final temporary easement approved though, and I think that was the last huge hurdle. So moving in the right direction.
Where did they?
Need an easement.
Um, I believe there were a few properties along there. Um, I think it was more, I, I could be totally misspeaking, but I want to say it was for like utility work.
Oh.
And trucks coming in and out of.
Are they gonna realign where it attaches to Calistoga? I know that was original plan to make it more, you know, 90 degree, not that sweep we've gotten at.
I believe the intention is still to, um, bring the White Hawk Boulevard bypass through there and there will eventually be a roundabout. Where it connects.
They, they purchased the property that has a sharp triangle.
Yeah, on Kansas, the little, it used to be Yellow House. I don't know what it is now. Yeah. No, I knew we owned that, but yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry for being so ignorant. What all will this project on Kansas Street do?
Uh, it looks like improvements include rebuilding of the road system, which will reduce noise vibrations to the surrounding homes and will provide traffic calming. Um, improved paved parking areas to enhance safety and comfort for local homeowners. Sidewalks will be wider and, um, be compliant with ADA rules. And then it looks like upgraded water main and stormwater facilities to improve the long-term reliability of utilities for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it doesn't include a roundabout at, uh.
They stop at Colane for this project?
Okay.
Yeah, the, yeah, I forgot that's the, that end, Calistoga connection isn't part of this plan.
I'm looking forward to the nicer curving part. Seven people from across the side walk next to me.
All right, agenda setting. So.
There will be nothing from me, uh, at this point. We're, we're wrapped up.
Disapproved, resubmit in 90 days, final disapprove.
Right now, there's nothing more that I need to present to the planning commission other than, I think the agenda setting at this point is, uh, sorting out what's going on with Safeway sign. Which we've got, we've got a motion made in the February 2025 minutes, Danielle.
Yeah, that definitely put that on and yeah, our regular stuff. Maybe somebody else will want to put a sign it. Maybe somebody will be in the business there by the food bank and they'll have something coming. That would be nice.
They found a bill of fairness.
A Ferris wheel? That sounds like fun. All right, we are down to number nine.
Move your journey.
Was that Tom?
I have a bit like you though.
Jeff and Chris, all those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carried.